Greg Alexander.
Here.
Mike Baber.
Here.
Christina Brune.
Here.
Adam Carson.
Here.
Lindsay Keisman.
Here.
Ray Lepinus.
Here.
Amy Rath.
Here.
Carolyn Schofield.
Here.
Connie Maschini.
Public comment?
We've got four. Lisa Oris from Grief Guide, this is hers.
If we could have Lisa Oris from Grief Guide.
I'm sorry?
Public comments?
No.
Did you sign up for public comments?
No.
Oh, she must have signed up on the wrong form.
No.
Okay, that makes it easy. So Bill Oris must have signed up
Nope.
on the wrong form to.
Wrong form.
Tracy from Options and Advocacy.
Okay, Tracy from Options and Advocacy.
Hi, Tiffany Valkema, Autism Resource Center with Options and Advocacy. Today, I'd like to highlight an urgent issue faced by many families and a trend that we're seeing with our families navigating more. The struggle to find and maintain childcare for their autistic children. For the families we've worked with, the lack of accessible and appropriate care isn't just an inconvenience, it's a crisis. Without stable childcare, parents are often forced to leave their jobs, reducing family income and straining their mental health. Moreover, when children do not have access to quality care that meets their unique needs, their development and emotional wellbeing is impacted, leading to long-term challenges. At the Autism Resource Center, we believe it is essential to prioritize the delivery of additional training and consultation opportunities within childcare facilities in our county during fiscal year 25. Building staff capacity will help increase access to quality care and improve outcomes for autistic children and their families. As always, we thank you for the support that this board provides to the services we offer in the community, and we look forward to working together to address this critical issue. Thank you.
Kelly Seneca, grant update.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Schmeck. I'm the Director of the McHenry County Specialty Courts, and don't worry, I'm not here to ask for money. I'm actually here to tell you that I got some money. We received two federal grants. One is for the assisted outpatient treatment. It's $1.6 million over four years, and this will hopefully be such an impact on the community. We're working together with the State's Attorney's Office, Thresholds, Rosecrance, the Social Work Department, and of course Leo from the Mental Health Board has really helped us get started. We also received another grant to increase mental health services with the specialty courts, and that one is for $1.3 million over five years. And this will give us a clinical supervisor, another case manager, and it will give all the clinical staff training in dialectical behavioral therapy. So we're super excited for that, huge accomplishments, and I just wanted to share that with you all, that we're trying to expand our programs without the help from you, although we appreciate really being a part of the Mental Health Board so much and the connections that you guys give us. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for the grant writer because they helped us write both grants, and that was huge for us. So they were super helpful, really helped us along with the process and helped us gather the correct information, though, so that the process was pretty seamless for us. So I'm happy to report that. I just wanted to thank you for the support, and that was really helpful, so.
If I could have a motion for the approval of the minutes from August 27, 2024? I'll make that motion. Can I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. President's report. One of the first things in the package is with regard to the Mental Health Board Committee dates. There may be changes to this document due to the possibility of committee reassignments, as well as the potential of new board members joining after the new year. There are three seats that will be opening up for the 2025 calendar year, and there are two individuals that will be re-upping with the possibility of re-upping. There is one that will not, so we'll definitely have one additional opening, a new member. Input on the Executive Director's review of Leo. Bridget will be sending out ED review documents for the board members to complete. As a request in the past, if there are any serious issues that you would like to address, we respectfully request that you discuss these with Leo prior to the submission. The Community Connection Summit was held here at the Mental Health Board. Approximately 300 registrants and 280 people attended. The preparation of this event was taken by Chris Doherty, who we'd like to thank for hard work, as well as the rest of the staff. There are upcoming training events that you can find at the end of our package. I'd like to pass on to the Director's report.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. We've got a full house, and there's popcorn for our fiscal year 25 application reviews later, so please help yourself. I will be talking about the fiscal year 25 application review shortly, so I will skip that part in my Director's report and move on to just acknowledging, I know Ray just acknowledged the Community Connection Summit and what a success it was on the loneliness epidemic, but again, it was very well received this year with over 280 participants. I know we put 250, but it was 280 over that, and I just can't thank everybody enough. We had such an amazing synergistic event, which I've received a lot of accolades and special shout-outs, especially to Chris Doherty, who's our Training Coordinator, Mariel Kendall, who's our Training Assistant, Gary Rukin, who's our Trauma and Form Coordinator, and the Suicide Prevention Task Force and the committee members who put all this together, the presenters, the volunteers. Again, their contribution in making this a success this year was amazing, so we look forward to next year's event, but thank you all for taking part in that. Next, I just wanted to highlight again that the grant writer is making great success, as you heard from Kelly from the 22nd Judicial Specialty Court. She mentioned her two grants. We also received notice of actually four awards total besides those two. YFC received a $20,000 grant from the Burst Dad Foundation to expand prevention and intervention services for youth-based. And this funding will also support a new mentor training program for high school students to enhance their academic, social, and emotional skills while mentoring young peers. And we recently found that the Foglia Foundation sponsored NAMI's Walk on October 5th. So they sponsored NAMI's Walk for $5,000. So we're very happy that the grant writer is making some significant headway in the grants and capacities for our providers. And just speaking of which, I know we're talking about, I just am jumping to the important dates. This Saturday is the Suicide Prevention Walk. We do have a Mental Health Board team, and I know some of the board members are on the team, but it's not too late. You can just come walk. You can just show up that day at nine o'clock at the Dole Center, so you don't even have to register if you don't want to, but we would love to see everyone there, and we would love to see the public. If the public needs a team to walk on, you can walk with the Mental Health Board. We would love to have everyone join our team. And secondly, the other walk is back by popular demand. We haven't had it in a while, is the NAMI Walk, which is on October 5th, and that's at Veterans Acres. And again, that starts at nine o'clock at Veterans Acres. We welcome everybody to register. There's also a resource table. The Mental Health Board will have a resource table, and I want to thank the board members in advance who will be helping to man that table, so let me know if you can also make that event. And that's all I had to highlight from the Director's report. I know that Mike Baber talked about the Biden Administration's announcement earlier on, and I could highlight that. Again, that is a highly anticipated proposal meant to force healthcare insurers to cover mental health care on the same basis as physical health. It's the latest in a long-running federal government effort to crack down on insurance plans, skimping on treatment for conditions including anxiety, depression, and addiction, so we're very happy about that piece. So that's it. Thank you.
If I could have the Treasurer's report?
So we met in finance this month to cover a variety of details. We've got an estimate on our fund balance usage for this fiscal year. As you all know, we put in about $1 million into fund balance, and it looks like we won't use $1 million of fund balance into our budget, I should say, and it looks like we're going to land somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000 of that remaining in fund balance instead of being utilized. So I'm sure Mel will give us the exact details on that at the end of the fiscal year. Additionally, we had our county treasurer, Donna Kurtz, come in for a presentation with the sales tax dollars that we are now going to have. There will be some months of overlap from our property tax and our sales tax dollars. And one of the considerations that we have had is what to do with those funds to maximize the utilization of them, and the county has been getting really remarkable rates of return on investments over the last couple of years, so we asked her to come in and do a special presentation to present some options for us and explain the details, so the Finance Committee got to go through that experience, and I know Leo and Mel connected with her afterwards for some additional follow-up questions. As part of the Finance Committee and that discussion, we also wanted to review our fund balance reserve policy to see if there were any limitations on, currently, we have a five-month fund balance policy. It was always a consideration that we would review that fund balance policy at a date probably somewhere mid of next year to see if we needed to keep that amount of money. Due to the concept of potentially investing and Donna's forecasting that investing sooner rather than later would yield higher results, we wanted to review what it would look like if we temporarily would borrow money from our fund balance to utilize in an investment, knowing that sales tax dollars would be coming in the end of this year and the beginning of next year. So our fund balance reserve policy would not need any amendments or changes because it does allow for us to invest that five months. So we did review that document as well in our Finance Committee. And other than that, it was kind of business as usual, reviewing budgets and spendings and all of those things. Does anybody else from the committee, I know a lot of you are present, have any additional information you'd like to share?
Thank you, Lindsay.
Come on. The, before Leo's stint, we had discussed, there was, there were lawsuits going on in all of the counties over fund balances. Valley High Nursing Home had like $50 million in a fund balance. I don't know if you remember that. And on behalf of whomever, there was a guy running around suing municipalities, mental health boards, if they had so much, remember that, Ray? Yeah. Was that, I mean, how far, how much of a fund balance can we have without being subject to that?
I'm not aware.
Okay, I just remember it, and it was a big deal with David, and so if I'm understanding you correctly, we're going to be co-mingling our investments with the county?
If the, so first and foremost, that's a board decision, so we took the first step of getting the information presented to us, and the idea would be that by co-mingling dollars, you get a better rate of return on your investment. There are multiple options that we consider as far as, you know, how liquid you keep a portion of the money, how long you invest a portion of the money, there's laddering. So, but currently, you know, to answer maybe the question that you had out there is, you know, our goal is to have that five-month reserve, and when it exceeds that, you know, every year, we are looking at typically infusing that into our budget, or at least that's been
Of course.
kind of the practice of the last couple of years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Leo, did you want to make a comment? Sure. Christine?
Just to clarify on what Lindsay's saying, that the five months, and this is what I got from the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, that we want to maintain that five months of fund balance, but that extra sales tax where we have that overlap of sales tax dollars and property tax dollars, that potentially could be invested separate than the five-month fund balance.
And I just, I want to add, this is for topic of discussion later in our agenda because we asked for it to be brought before the board because it was timely, so I know Leo has some updated information, so it would probably be relevant to hear her take on that and then discuss it at that point, yeah.
If I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda items 6A through 6C? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? So do we do a vote or a roll call? The motion passes. Old Business Investments and Cash Fund Balance Review, any discussions regarding this? Leo?
So this is the follow-up that Lindsay was just talking about on the agenda, and basically, you know, what we looked into is that the Mental Health Board will have a four-month overlap in the sales tax and not five, so it's October through January dispersments. So approximately that'll be $4 million will be available to invest if the current fund balance is five months, which is what our policy currently is. So approximately $5 million, though, will be available to invest if the fund balance policy is dropped to four months reserve. It's not recommended that the Mental Health Board go below four months, but we could look at that four-month reserve in the future. But at this point, you know, we're looking at starting with the five-month reserve and the four months of overlap dollars, so we're looking at $4 million. There will be a two-month lag in fiscal year 25 under the sales taxes compared to the five-month lag that we've had with property taxes, so that's better for us. We'll have more cash flow coming in, although it'll be variable versus the known property taxes. The Mental Health Board does have enough cash to invest in the full $4 million after October, so for July, we started collecting sales tax in July, but we haven't received it yet. We should be receiving it in October payment, starting for our July sales tax, and then November through January sales tax dispersments would replace the fund balance cash if we choose to use that. So as Lindsay talked about, the Mental Health Board was presented with two investment opportunities, but again, there's many more that we could look at, but the county treasurer showed a quarterly dispersment of principal providing access to funds resulting in less revenue earned, or the full amount invested was the second option, which is untouched for five years, resulting in a higher return. So again, although the second option is how, I know I personally like to invest, is you put the money away and you don't look at it, I think as a board, the board really needs to look at what do we need, and that's what the county treasurer was saying, is that each department is different. And what we currently need is a continued infusion into our annual client services funds because we still don't have enough funding at this time, as we, as you have seen through the recent reviews. So, you know, what we're looking at is probably something related to the second, or to the first option, where we are making that $4 million investment and maybe taking an annual contribution that will go into client services. Again, so it's not accumulating all that fund balance, but we're reinvesting into client services year to year. So that was the piece. We did follow up with the county treasurer, and no other county departments have a policy regarding investment. They use the county treasurer's policy, and the county treasurer works with each of the department heads and leadership on those investment opportunities. So at this point, we've got the $4 million that we can invest, and in the future, depending on what we decide with the fund balance, we'll have probably another million. We don't see ourselves having much more than that in the future. I think this can be continued investment unless there's a huge capital project that we can't, you know, that we need that liquid cash. I can see that investment just being there for the long run and us continuing to take that, you know, the revenue from those investments into client services. But we won't have much more opportunity as we haven't had over all these years of making an investment, so this is an opportunity that we do have. So I don't know if there's discussion, questions at this point.
Lindsay?
I want to add that one of the questions that I had before Finance Committee was, when did we need lots of money and what risks are there in locking this up? And, yeah, I'm happy to report, I asked, you know, our Fiscal Operations Manager to look over the last 10-year period of time, any time in which we had to dip into fund balance above and beyond the money that we had in that fiscal year's budget, right? And while there was some times where money was used in advance, it was that fiscal year's budget that was used in advance. And so the answer, she put together something, it's on page 28 in our packet, but, you know, the simple answer is in the last 10 years, it was never, not during COVID, not during any of the things that have happened, did we ever have to, you know, in an emergency dip into those dollars? So it's a part of the conversation of, could we, you know, put those dollars into something and, you know, infuse it? And then the other conversation is, you know, otherwise, we have this added money, what would it be sitting there doing? And is it sustainable to infuse it into our client services budget? You know, it could be for a year or two, and then that money's gone, and then programs could be canceled. So there's a lot of considerations, but I just wanted to highlight that that was one of my initial questions was, what if any risk is there to this? And then another piece of information that I think is important is, you know, currently, we've been getting a really decent rate of return on our checking account, just our basic checking account. But some of the information that Donna provided to us is that the impact of the economy and things that they're forecasting to come will first and foremost impact there, and there are more safe and conservative choices available for investing that would keep us at a higher, you know, yield longer than just remaining in our current checking account. But as you all know, I've reported over the last two years about how our interest income has been much higher than expected, but there's reason to believe that we won't continue to get that over the next year, which is why, you know, we were also considering this at this time because probably six or seven months ago, or even longer, we asked that question and then went, why would we do that if we're getting a decent rate of return and it's all liquid? Now's the time where we're looking at it going, well, maybe we're not going to get as good of a deal as we could get there. So those are just some pieces of information I knew mattered to me that I wanted to share and communicate out to the board for decision-making around this.
What percentage are we getting? What percentage are we getting? Do you know?
Mel would know the right number. I know it's above five.
It's 5.48.
Yeah. She said 5.48.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Greg?
When I was on Building and Grounds, I remember there was a projection on some capital needs that were going to occur, and there were spikes kind of looking out two, three years, and I don't know if the issue was ever resolved on how we were going to deal with those, but probably can't resolve it tonight, but it might be worth going back and looking at that to see if that plays a factor into these decisions. Like, we expect the furnace to need overhaul, you know, so big spikes that you can't really handle with the year-by-year way we typically do things, so.
Yeah, I think we've, we'll budget as much as we can, like, for example, for fiscal year 25, we are looking at the capital investment of our bathrooms downstairs and making them ADA accessible. So we're trying to put in as much into the budget as possible, but again, there's some things that aren't, you know, a furnace goes out and so forth that we'll have to replace, but we are looking at that and trying to make sure that we're putting those high-ticket items into our annual budget.
Yeah, I guess the concern was, in a year where you've got a huge need to spend that, is it going to make a very unequal, you know, a big dip in what we can provide for clients, and how can we manage that? I don't think it was resolved, at least not while I was on Building and Grounds.
Yeah, and I, again, what we talked about is because taking advantage of the overlap dollars, and that's what the county board was also encouraging us to do, is looking at those capital investments and what we need to do, and now that we have those overlap funds, so that was the discussion that we've also had with the county board and county administration.
Carolyn?
Yeah, and thanks, and kind of to, I was going to ask just a similar question to Greg, as far as how I see that overlap dollars and what I've, I've interpreted from conversations that have been had is that would be one of the ways to use it, is in those capital improvements. that have been had is that would be one of the ways to use it is in those capital improvements. So we didn't dip into any sort of services, service funding. But if we're set and we don't have that need, I would be in favor of that long-term investment from the standpoint of several things. One, you keep saying that, you know, we're not meeting the needs. We will never meet the needs. I mean, I just want to make that very clear. As much as I appreciate everything that all the providers do, we will never meet the needs of the community. And so I think to have that as a goal is unrealistic. I think that we're doing really well, and we're listening to the providers and trying the best we can in to distribute it in a way that addresses the most needs or the most viable and efficient and effective ways to provide them in the county. But I also think from a long-term standpoint, to utilize dollars and put it into programs that are not then sustainable because we can't. If we're using that money, we cannot put in more than we have, and that money will run out. And so putting it into areas like either capital improvements, that's fine, or putting it into an investment where on the long-term, more money and have a greater return on investment, I think would be really valuable because of the fact that switching to sales tax dollars, although it's providing more money right now, which is great, the one thing you don't have the ability to do is to really increase that. The way that the money for the providers is going to increase is only by the cost of goods. So the rate, and if inflation doesn't continue and if we go back, you know, everyone here would hopes we go back, hopes that groceries are less or, you know, products we buy in the store are going to get less someday. So you have to remember that that sales tax percentage is going to stay the same. So it will fluctuate with how the market is fluctuating. So to have that, and I think five years is a really good time period to see what that sales tax does to those providers and then be able to make the decision after that five years of where it's needed best and how to best utilize it. I just think that would be a really smarter, more conservative way, and it's not taking away from the providers because they're going to see an increase this year because that sales tax percentage will give a slight increase. And I think you need to see what that does in moving forward, and I think five years would be here before we know it. So it's not taking any money away. It's truly overlap money that we did not really anticipate and just by the way of cycles ended up benefiting. I think it would be a mistake to use it now into services as much as, you know, it'd be great to have more services. I think smart, balanced budget and be a wiser way of utilizing our money and having that money put away and make more money for the future. But that's just my take on it.
Adam, you had a question?
Just two comments, one about the buildings and ground. Reference to furnaces, where discussion did come up in the meeting about, it's hard to predict those things, and if it ain't broke, we don't need to fix it. You know, and when it does break, there is money that is going to be liquid, that's going to be available per the county treasurer, that if we needed money, we can get that. If there's an emergency, we did discuss that, that there is funds that they can make liquid to us relatively quickly in an emergency. And I think that even this being a county-owned, well, county-run building, not owned by the county, but it would get taken care of. I don't want there to be any concern about that. But that's where we were at with things, and some things need to be addressed. And it's kind of hard, you know, when the water heater goes out in your house, you've got to get a water heater. You make it happen, it's kind of the same thing. So just, we're aware and we know, we've got a plan about what's to look for, and I think that's going to come up in capital purchase budget items going forth.
Lindsay?
I have a couple of comments. I think additionally, speaking to what you were just talking about, you know, our normal process where we end up with money that's not used throughout the year, I think that we have money, you know, within any current year budget to address a true building and facility emergency. And worst-case scenario, we, you know, would do that in fund balance if we had to, without even touching investment dollars. I think that would probably be a last choice if we could find the dollars within the current year. I wanted to comment, Carolyn, on what you said. I, you know, and just to be clear, there's the overlap dollars, there's fund balance dollars, you know, and really what we're talking about today is the overlap dollars. My personal opinion on this is we were presented with two options, one for five years with almost double the rate of return, I think, than one where we would invest but then take out portions of dollars every year in an interest income, right? And as Leo said, all of us, if we have the ability to leave money alone, would rather have a higher yield. With that said, I envision my future, right? If I'm on this board five years from now and there's a magical $1.3 million that our county treasurer said is going to get put into our pockets, what are we going to do with it then? We're going to have the same conversation about, well, these dollars aren't coming next year, so what do we do with them? Do we reinvest them? And at some point, I think the answer is, if we're going to do investments, while it might not be as good of a rate of return, it's consistently something we might be able to count on and budget if we took out the interest income every year into our next, you know, fiscal year budgeting plan. If you left alone whatever number we decided on, you know, Leo said $4 million is what can be done right now. If we left that alone and if every year it brought in whatever it's going to bring in, $100,000, $120,000, $75,000, I mean, I'm looking at the same binder you guys all looked at, and that's one, two, three programs that we might be able to fund extra in a way where we could potentially count on it being somewhat sustainable. So I personally feel like that might be a way we serve today while also being fiscally responsible. And I just worry that five years from now, we're going to be having the same conversation of what to do with potentially, yes, a larger pool of money. So, you know, and I do agree with you, Carolyn, the sales tax hopefully will increase over time. And I don't want to use the principle of that for whatever those overlap dollars are because I don't know what we can count on or what that's going to look like. But I do think we could use the interest income sooner rather than later. And so that's my personal opinion. And then my last comment is, you know, Leo kind of said it quickly, but we asked, and you know, the general way that this is handled is that the county treasurer works with the heads of the departments to really make these, you know, to, for us to consider empowering our, you know, staff and team to make these kinds of decisions and to make the call that makes the most sense. And, you know, if there's an influx of awesome sales tax dollars, maybe future investments would be locked up for longer terms. And it is flexible. While she presented us with a five-year option in this, we could go back to her and say, no, we only want to lock it up for two years or three years or one year. So I'd love to throw it out there that I think we should work on approving tonight the ability for our executive director and staff to work with the county treasurer to make a plan and put that in action.
It's not a decision point, but...
That's, I'm throwing out there that that's where I'm at with it because every minute that we wait, it appears that the return on investment potential is like a line graph going straight down. So, yeah, I'll end there, sorry.
I was just pointing to Eric that he's got to put a vote in if you're making that motion or that consideration.
Mike's reading for...
You basically answered my question. I was trying to figure out on four, four or five million, how much interest over five years versus over like one year? And it is substantially different to lock it up. And it sounds like on a five-year, around 10%. Is that accurate?
It was in your packet, yeah.
Oh, it is? I didn't read that.
Yeah, I think the number was around 1.3 million was the estimate, I believe, what you said, yeah.
In any regard, you answered it for me.
Yeah. It's less, Mike, if we take it out every year, but it's a little more accessible and fluid. And even to the example of Greg's concerns about something like an unintended expense, those dollars can be put into a budget into the next fiscal year if we had to do something like that. It might not go to client services that year if our staff thought that that's how it had to balance that year's budget. It's more dollars right now versus a lot more dollars locked up for five years.
I like that idea. I would agree with that.
So was there a motion being...
Is there, are we done with discussion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to empower our executive director and staff the ability to move forward with investments in the sum related to our overlap dollars.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I guess I was looking for more of a policy because I don't think it's a board policy to put the executive director in charge of the funds. I think a board policy would be more related on if we wanted it specific to timing or if we wanted to, like, the terms. I guess I thought, coming out of finance, that's what we were going to have more of a specific policy, you know, taking that money and investing it. So I don't, I don't really get a clear direction from that as to where we are at from a policy standpoint. To just say to invest funds, I mean, this is, this is a one-time opportunity. We're not going to have this again. So I think it's a unique situation. I mean, we still have the capabilities of investing on the short term, that five-month reserve that will be sitting there and take that, you know, you can still invest that money and have that accessible and very liquid. But having this one lump sum of what's estimated right now to be a minimum of $4 million, it's the only time we're going to get this. So I just think, I understand that that date that Donna gave us is coming up of like the 18th, when they anticipate, although I'd heard the other day that that might not be a date, it might get pushed off further in the year. So I just don't want to necessarily rush through it right now when I, I don't see a clear policy in place. So I just don't think, right now, it's there, I don't feel comfortable with it because I'm not really sure what it means, and it's a little vague in the sense of, you know, investment, but then what happens to it? Is it going to come back into the budget or what timing? Like, I think that the board maybe needs to structure our policy a little bit stronger to give a little clearer direction. But that's just me. I just don't feel comfortable with that because I, from what I've gotten, other conversations when we've had them with the county board and the executive board, and then on finance, I just felt like there would be a better, more concrete policy in place that would be in front of us to move forward. And we may have the opportunity to do that next, whenever our next meeting is, because I know it's coming up. I know it's just intended for the allocation discussions, but, you know, I do think there's the potential of maybe solidifying something a little bit more so than kind of an on-the-fly policy. So I don't support doing it right now just because I feel like it's a little too vague.
If I may, Ray?
Actually, Amy was next.
I'll go after Lindsay. Go ahead. I'll, I don't want you to lose your thoughts, so go ahead and then I'll come back.
I think, you know, when we were talking about policies, we were, in finance at least, we definitely wanted to have a policy as it related to the treatment of fund balance dollars and the portions of investing in it. And I know the request that came out of finance was to look into the way other departments in the county do their interactions with that to see if that was sort of the standard. And my understanding was that that was done and that the standard is that it's typically decision-making around that isn't based on policies that other departments have put into place with specific parameters for their department heads. But I'm not opposed to us doing that either, if that's something that the board wants to do. I do, though, believe that there are always unique circumstances every year, every moment, every, you know, cycle of need that our staff is needing to do. And my understanding with Donna was that she might meet with people as often as monthly or quarterly, and that by making any kind of process that would require board approval or go through finance and then go through board could really kind of stymie the process of what they're trying to do and making it useful to us. So I'm okay with that, and at the same time, I do think that was the ask. So if it's something that the board wants, is more formal policies or bumpers on the bumper lanes for what we want our staff to do, then we'll have to do that. And I would, I would suggest that we do that in a timely manner so that we can take advantage of what's happening.
Yes, thank you. I wanted you to have the opportunity to answer, so, thank you. I, real brief, I am very much in favor of just doing something with this. I really don't want to extend it. We have all of this that we have to go through. We have a community and providers that we are supposed to be serving. And it's not that I'm against having a policy for it, but if this is truly a one-time overlap dollars and developing something to do with it, I would rather that get taken care of than revisit this again and again. So that's the way I'm leaning.
Any more discussion? If we could have a vote?
I will try. My motion was to empower our executive director and Mental Health Board staff to work with the county treasurer to invest the four months of overlap dollars with the county treasurer.
Is the vote open?
The vote's not open yet. The motion passes. New business for discussion. We have NatCon approval for two to three board members and possibly a staff member. Mel's going to present the cost of three members plus one staff member to attend. It's being held in Philadelphia this year. Please reach out to Connie if you're interested in attending.
Basically, this is a decision memo. Do you need to approve any travel expenses from the board? There's a local government public act that requires this. So we're projecting a rough estimate of around 29, 209, sorry, $2,941 for each person that attends the conference. So at this point, you would either say yea or nay that you approve this expense.
Can I have a motion or any discussion?
Why don't they have it in Hawaii?
I'm sorry. If we could have a motion to approve the funding of three board members plus one staff to attend NatCon 2025 in Philadelphia?
The way you said it is a little different than what's written here because what's written here in the motion does not identify the number of people. So I think what you said needs to be what's, is the motion. The motion just says approve travel. The background information has the number of people, but the motion does not, so just for clarity.
You said it.
We can make an amendment on that. So again, to have a motion to approve the funding of three board members plus one staff member to attend the 2025 NatCon conference in Philadelphia. member to attend the 2025 NatCon conference in Philadelphia. Lindsay? Carolyn?
I just wanted to clarify, this is in the budget, right? There was?
Yeah, there is. There's many, I believe.
And this falls under, the three would be within that and allow for other trainings in there too? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If we could have the vote? The vote is open. There's one missing. The motion passes.
And I can take this next one, Ray.
Okay, this is with regard to NISRA funding request?
Yeah, the fiscal year '25 provider funding changes. We just wanted to put it on your radar. There's nothing to vote on. It's just for you to have in your packet as we're going through the reviews. So you have NISRA funding requests. One of the things that they're doing, and I'll remind you all when we get to that section, is that they're withdrawing their LEAP program request and they want those dollars put into their day treatment program or day program. And then new directions, again, the, there's a letter in there and Bobby spoke last month regarding some of the challenges, funding challenges they are having. And he's basically requesting full, you know, request of his services. So again, we'll go through all that when we go through the funding changes in a moment. Or the funding reviews.
We can move to AC, the Mental Health Board's 2025 Funding Plan. Leah?
Yeah, and I guess it's customary that I stand at the podium for this for a few hours, so I will, I will do that. Is there a need for any kind of recess? The board's good? We can move, continue on?
How long you planning?
Well, it's gonna take a while to go through all of this. Okay, first off, I just want to start out and, again, to the main purpose why we're here today, the purpose of tonight are two main objectives. First, to review the fiscal year '25 funding plan recommendations, obtain further questions and information for our next meeting so our board can make the best decisions on October 22nd. And the second is to select programs and agencies for the two special meetings on October 9th and 16th at 5:00 PM. We are recommending that the follow-up questions be obtained, and thank you all, board members who have sent those in, but be obtained for, if we're recommending that follow-up questions be obtained for any current provider programs versus having those current provider agencies present at special meetings. So rather, the focus of the special meetings dedicated to new agencies and any new programs that are being recommended for funding. However, it's a board decision on who you want to bring in. We will solicit the special meeting requests after we've completed the review of the funding draft recommendations. Tonight's funding plan is an accumulation of the process that started in May with approving the fiscal year '25 budget, the June-July provider application submissions, and the intense staff and board reviews and deliberations these past two months, which will continue through October. The staff and board reviews utilize the proposed rubric as a guide to the funding allocation recommendations presented tonight based on the alignment with the Mental Health Board's three-year plan, Community Mental Health Act, our mission and industry standards, as well as the review of the monthly service data, utilization compliance audits, meeting attendance, and program financial statements. These recommendations are based on data-informed reviews. In October, the system that seemed to work well in the past will continue with our board president, who will facilitate the agenda and run through the fiscal year '24 applications and ask you if you want any of those applications pulled from the group, which will indicate that you don't agree with the current recommendations in place. We will discuss each pulled program at that time in October for possible changes that will also impact other programs. Therefore, please plan to have a balanced budget solution at that time. Once we balance the budget together with those programs, we will take a motion to approve the entire funding plan with the amended changes made during any, noting any abstentions or no votes. We will again review all this next month. Regarding any conflicts of interest, I don't believe we have any statutory or common law conflicts of interest as we did last year with a couple board members also being on a board of a new agency, for example. In those cases, those board members had to recuse themselves from specific presentations, discussions, and votes because it was a higher level of statutory conflict of interest. I believe we may only have personal conflicts of interest this year. Again, these conflicts of interest are just that, they're personal, and one does not need to disclose any detail. And this matter is truly up to each board member to decide themselves whether he or she is biased and should be voting, recusing, or abstaining. Legal counsel's recommendation with a mental health board who is personally conflicted or there is a clear appearance of conflict at minimum should abstain from the vote. Therefore, any conflicts of interest that board members can state, you can state that at any time when we're discussing an agency, but especially on October 22nd voting. But it almost, it may also come into play for the special meetings that we were going to be having later in October. So let's get started. For tonight's purpose of review, this is a draft of the recommendations and any notable issues will be addressed as we walk through each program name and funding recommendation. We have our mental health board staff and colleagues, Karen Frisk, Compliance Operations Manager, and Melanie Duran, the Fiscal Operations Managers, on the sidelines here to pull up any documents to help answer any specific questions that we can answer tonight, but also to mainly secure the follow-up questions that we'll be sure to send out to all the board members before the next meeting. We appreciate the communication and the questions to date for this review process. Again, we realize the overwhelming amount of detail and the importance of this process. So let's get started with the annual Mental Health Board Funding Application Reviews first. We had 103 applications for request totaling over $16 million with the board's challenge to balance the budget to our fiscal year '25 $10.8 million Client Services budget. Then we will review the recommendations from the 13 applications of the opioid settlement funds that totaled over $2.7 million with a $674,000 opioid settlement fund client service budget for fiscal year '25. They were separate applications that we will review in conjunction with our annual funding. As we review overall, please note, due to the challenges of balancing the budget, some of the fee-for-service requests are not recommended to be funded to their accurate projections and are recommended to return to mid-year process in which we will have $650,000 budgeted in fiscal year '25. So without any further ado, we will start in, well, somewhat alphabetical order, with the 22nd Judicial Circuit. As you heard from executive director and the public comments, the assisted outpatient treatment program is being withdrawn due to the SAMSA grant application that we received. So again, that, we were banking on that and we already had stated a zero, so we do not need to balance the budget any further there. So congratulations again to the 22nd for the AOT SAMSA grant. Next is the drug court. And the drug court request for fiscal year '25 is $102,016.2. And we are recommending, they had a fiscal year allocation of $74,500. We are recommending an increase of $77,300 for the drug court program. Overall, again, we are, we are looking at increases to all the 22nd judicial applications, which are mainly purchase of positions, but not at their full request, which we believe is appropriate with our county partnership to absorb especially some more of the administrative costs. But again, these are increases as you see compared to where they have been. The next one is the DUI court. And that requested amount was $94,968.97. And we are recommending a purchase position of $67,000. Next is the mental health court. And that was a requested amount of $202,412 for a purchase position. And we are recommending $153,400 for that position. Next is the ride to recovery. And this service, okay, that is, that request amount was for $60,000. And this service is transportation, which is not within our funding application scope. The recommendation is not to fund at this time, but if there's interested board members who want to look at this venture, you know, we, we are looking at possibly more of an IGA. We did look into this, the Department of Transportation is looking to extend the contract for another year. The last year and a half, they were funded by the Department of Transportation. And there's a resolution to fund them at $60,000 that will be before the county board this week at, at the Cow, I believe. But regardless of the outcome, traditionally, the Mental Health Board has not supported specific transportation for agencies outside of our transportation grants and the Kaizen program since it's, it's somewhat outside of our scope of the Community Mental Health Alexium Brothers Behavioral Health Hospital, Ascension. Pardon?
Wallace Recovery.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, I'm so sorry. We missed the Wallace Recovery Ambassador from the 22nd Judicial. Thank you, Adam. That request came in at $88,354. And we are recommending $50,700. And again, basically due to budget constraints on this one because we do recommend this program, recommend the partial purchase of the position really at the $50,700 to continue to support the growth in the program. If there are more dollars that are available, you know, we can come back and look at this program because this one was more due to the budget constraints. Any questions with judicial or any further follow-up? Okay, Alexium Brothers Behavioral Hospital, again, that's how with the legal contract we have, but known as Ascension. The request came in for $250,000 for the clinical and psychiatric services. This program did not materialize in fiscal year, this past fiscal year. So we are actually not recommending funding this program. Due to issues with the lack of corporate support, this program did not start at all in fiscal year '24. And with the competitive applications and budget constraints, we do not recommend funding be tied up, as it has been this past year, with this application and to a program that really lacks the administrative support. So we're not recommending funding at this time. The clinical navigator position, that funding request came in at $132,360 for a purchase of position. And we are recommending $110,000 for this purchase position. Due to budget constraints, we recommend the partial funding of this position since it does strongly align with the Mental Health Board priorities. The neurodevelopment therapist, the request came in at $75,000 for this purchase position and we are recommending $72,000 with the special conditions that this position be hired in the first quarter since although the programming has continued, this position has not been filled. So most of this fiscal year, this position has not been filled. So again, we are recommending funding the position, but with the special condition that it be filled within the first quarter. And next for Alexium Brothers is the youth partial and intensive outpatient program that we have been funding. It is a current program as well. And that came in at the same amount, $200,000, and we're recommending the full funding of the program at $200,000 due to the important psychiatric access and the overall treatment it provides for the youth and adolescents in our county. Again, I know I received questions from many of the board members, so if there's any further questions, just let us know. Ray?
I'm the, the one night, let me get the right name, sorry. I'm the co-occurring mental health, oh, the neurodevelopmental, the neurodevelopmental therapist, sorry, the way it's chopped up is throwing me off. Why has it not been filled? I mean, because, or what, what indicates that it will be filled? I guess kind of different than the one that you were just talking about, the earlier one that there's the administrative buy-in is not there. What's the difference?
We had, we had the neurodevelopment position in place in fiscal year '23, was it first funded? Yes. And it was in place that, that year, last year, you know, they lost that position. And they have been providing the programming, but they don't have the position. So the programming is actually being provided by Hoffman Estates staff. So we really want to, you know, I mean, it's up to the board, but from what I understand, we wanted to put more pressure on the agency to have this position in county.
And do you feel there's more administrative buy-in then on this program? Because they have, is it, are they contracting out or are they?
Because it was running, yes. It, this program was running where the other one never stood up.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the difference between the two.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, this is more of a clarifying question. If we want to revisit dollar allocations, do I make a note of that now or just hold it till our next meeting?
Yeah, make a note of it now and then in October is when we'll be deliberating. But that's a good question. We'll be deliberating all that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we'll move on to AID, Association for Individual Development. So we have the Behavioral Health Recovery Support Services, which is a purchase of position. And they are requesting $75,375. And we are recommending $50,900 for this position. Again, partial funding of this position to cover the CRSS and the intake coordinator positions. So again, we look through the budget and those are things that can be worked out in the work plan, just to let you know, like if there's any reductions and so forth from what they're budgeting in the applications to what the board gives out at the end. We, you know, those will be items that will be worked out during the work plan meeting, but that's what we're suggesting is the funding of the CRSS and the intake coordinators. Next is the Behavioral Health Recovery Support Services, which is fee-for-service. That amount requested was $150,000. And we are recommending $70,000, which is closer to their past year's utilization. So again, we look at utilization of the fee-for-service programs and try to base it off of that. Next is the Behavioral Health Support Living Service. Again, another fee-for-service program. The request is for $50,000 and our recommendation is $35,000 at this time. Then there's the telehealth, telepsychiatry support services. That amount came in and it's an access grant at $178,945. And we are recommending partial funding of $100,000 and reevaluating their capacity next year for appropriate increases in the future. As some of you may have As some of you may have seen and found in application, the volumes are extremely low for this funding investment. They did report, because we did ask, turnover issues in their clinical programs, which is a prerequisite to this, to the psychiatry. But the funding, you know, the funding at a higher level is not recommended at this time. Questions? Any follow-up questions for AID?
Carolyn?
Oh, Lindsay's before me, sorry. Oh, go ahead.
I know I asked this question about the Behavioral Health Supportive Living Services Fee-for-Service. I was asking clarification on the number of people that were projecting to fund at six, and you gave me some feedback that there was some budget projection numbers of twenty, and I would just like clarification. I don't think it's a presentation issue. I think it's just a simple, what is that projected number served? I'd like that information before next time.
Okay.
Thanks. And going back to the one where the utilization was at seventy thousand from the last year, the...
The Behavioral Health Recovery Support Services Fee-for-Service Program.
Is there any indication that that would be different? Or is that, I mean, I'm comfortable with using the last, I mean, I think that's a great indicator, but is there anything, any changes in the program or anything like that that they made no other?
Not that we know of, except hopefully that, you know, they'll be fully staffed. And again, remember, the fee-for-service programs are the programs that can come back during the year. Those are the programs that, you know, we unfortunately, with some of the programs, as you'll see as we move on, we gave them enough to get through mid-year, even though their projections were accurate, just because we had to balance this budget, and it was very difficult. So knowing that we have dollars in mid-year, you'll see that some of the fee-for-service programs were just initially reduced with the recommendation to come in during mid-year. So again, that if we see that this program is at higher utilization, they are always welcome to come back at mid-year and request more. Okay, Aunt Martha's. Aunt Martha's requested five hundred thousand for their, and this is an access grant, for their primary care behavioral health integration model, which is basically accessing psychiatry. Due to budget constraints only, we do recommend flat funding of four hundred thousand to maintain the psychiatric access at this time. You know, if we find that there's money in the budget, we can come back to this one as well, but we are recommending, again, due to budget constraints, of flat funding this, this service. Okay, next is Best Communities, and Best Communities is a new agency that is applying for us, and it's the McHenry County Peer Support Center application, and that is for the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred and seventy. And we are not recommending funding at this time, mainly due to budget constraints, but also the competitive grants in this application cycle. Although the hub is one of the things in our strategic plan, and we believe that, you know, the applicant can fulfill, can fulfill most of the components of this program, it's just, it's mainly the budget constraints and also the infrastructure of the program that we had talked about. I think for those of you that reviewed Foundant, it didn't score as high in the rubric as well, so we are not recommending funding at this time. Child Advocacy Center, McHenry County. Their secondary trauma services that we have been funding, their request this year was for a larger amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the grant, and due to budget constraints only, again, we are recommending partial funding of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Any of these that, that we talk about due to budget constraints, if there's dollars that we can find anywhere to go back, those are the ones that we are recommending going back to. Clearbrook Choice Program. We heard a lot from Clearbrook last year. I think the board has gotten a good education, which is wonderful, but the Choice Program Fee-for-Service, their request was for four hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred dollars. And we are, again, this is a fee-for-service program, and the projections for this fee-for- for service program is right on. I know the board, you know, was very deliberate with Clearbrook and said, make sure that, you know, your projections are correct. This projection is right on, but again, it's a fee-for-service program, and only due to our budget constraints, we are recommending a three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and three, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for this funding, with the known ability that all the fee-for-service programs can come before the board at mid-year. So again, we're, we are recommending a higher amount, and that they can come back, but please note, when many of these programs come back, to recall that we have asked them to come back, because we can't fund them fully at their projections at this time. Clearbrook, next is their purchase of position. The requested amount was at a hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars, and we are recommending, only due to budget constraints, a partial purchase of position of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is consistent with the eighty-eight percent of the past positions we funded there. So again, we're trying to look across the board. It is an increase, but not to the level that they needed. Clearbrook's voucher respite fee-for-service program. That amount request came in at thirty-five thousand, and again, that's fee-for-service, and we recommend the full funding of thirty-five thousand based on past utilization. Questions with Clearbrook?
Carolyn?
On the first two with the Choice Program, the, are those, with the allocation numbers, are those the totals that ended up after they came back and asked for increases, or are those the initial allocations?
Which, which number, I'm sorry? Their, their requested amount?
Is it, yeah, is it the, the utilization amount or the final approved amount, I guess, versus their initial approval amount?
Yeah, the four fifty-three six hundred is pretty accurate to the total that...
No, I'm sorry, the ones from the FY twenty-four.
Oh, FY twenty-four was the original approved amount.
I was gonna say it was like a hundred or a hundred and fifty, wasn't it? So...
Right.
So it's, it's their total that we've given them?
We've given them more. Melanie? Do you have that?
I could go back, I guess, and agenda and pull it up, but... And then so, well, she's looking at that. Because on the, and then on the question, similar to the question that I had last year, on if, if that allocation's at two forty-two on the purchase of position, and they're requesting one eighty-one, what is the change that they're asking for?
They're asking for less because they're asking for less positions to be filled. And again, without going into the application at Sin Foundant, so if you compare it from their positions that they asked us last year, they're asking for less positions to be filled than last year's.
Okay. I guess you can see my question on this one in particular, but, but you're, you're good, so.
With Clearbrook, the original budget was a hundred thousand, and we increased it to two sixty-five.
Okay, so that was, okay. Okay. Comfortable with it then, thank you.
Amy?
It's okay, my question.
Okay, next, Community Health Partnership of Illinois, Breaking the Stigma Mental Health Services. Their request was for seventy-six thousand dollars of a purchase of position, and this position has been vacant most of this year. We do not recommend funding consideration for fiscal year twenty-five, and for the applicant to not apply in the future unless, you know, they hire, this position's been hired in place, and the organization shows commitment to the program. So this, again, this program hasn't existed all year. We believe it's an important program. We have really stressed this with them. We've had several meetings with them, but this program has not been filled, or this position has not been filled. So we are not recommending funding in the future until they have somebody in place, which I know is hard to do without funding, but that's our recommendation at this time. Consumer Credit Counseling. Financial Literacy Workshops, McHenry County Partners in Mental Health. That is a fee-for-service request of twelve thousand dollars, and we are recommending ten thousand dollars in fee-for-service based on past year's utilization. Their Mental Wellness Through Financial Hardship. Their requested amount was thirty-five thousand, and we are recommending twenty-five thousand based on past utilization. Again, these are fee-for-service programs, so if there's a greater need, they can come before the board mid-year. Okay, moving on, if there's no questions, we have Crystal Lake Teen Center. This is a new funding request for break prevention education program of seventy thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars, and we are recommending forty thousand one hundred dollars. Part of a larger programmer. So this is part of a larger program, which received a grant with the assistance of our grant writers. So we do recommend the purchase of position at forty thousand one hundred. Next is the Circle of Support, and that requested amount was for seventy-two thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and we are recommending at this time fifty thousand dollars, mainly due to budget constraints. And again, recommending a purchase position funding at fifty thousand dollars to support all the positions and point five of the building manager. Questions, Crystal Lake Teen Center? Okay, next, Family Health Partnership. Family Health Partnership, the Patient Navigator Program. Both of the, both the Patient Navigator Program and the therapists are at basically, well, the Patient Navigator, same level, forty-seven thousand three hundred purchase of position request came in, and we are recommending full funding at forty-seven three hundred as requested. The therapist fee-for-service position, that request came in at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And again, we recommend an increase at ninety thousand dollars of funding to support the growth. Since it is fee-for-service, again, this program can come back mid-year. Okay, no questions. We're moving on to Greater Family Health.
Actually, there's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is a question. Sorry about that.
There is, I'm sorry, going back to the, oh, never mind, I got my answer.
Okay, Greater Family Health. The Behavioral Health Integration Program, the requested amount is at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and we are recommending the access grant funding of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is at the same level of fiscal year twenty-four original award. And again, it's, it's for increased screening and care behavioral health patients, and the reimbursements do not cover the costs, and this McHenry site is not supported by state or federal funding. Next is the Medication Assistant Program, MAT, and the request came in for seven thousand nine hundred dollars, and we are recommending full funding at seven thousand nine hundred dollars for this MAT program. Next is psychiatry, and the request came in at a hundred and ninety-four thousand, and we're recommending continued access of grant funding at a hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is the same level as fiscal year twenty-five to ensure access to psychiatry. Questions there? Moving on to a new agency, and again, all the new agencies will be coming to, and programs will be coming invited to the special meetings in October. The first one is Grief Guide, and they put in a request of a hundred thousand dollars, and our recommendation is eighty thousand dollars for a grief guide. The Grief Guide Community Response, that request came in at fifty thousand dollars, and due to budget constraints, we're not recommending funding at this time. And we did confirm with the Police Social Work Program that they are currently getting these referrals, who can in turn refer back to Grief Guide. So we are connecting the Police Social Work Program and Grief Guide together. Home of the Sparrow. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Chris.
I, I guess I wanted to just clarify the policy on funding programs for which we are the only funding source. I seem to have a hazy recollection that we had some restrictions on decisions of that nature.
Yeah, when we bring in some new funding, we, we, we do make some funding considerations for new grassroots programs, like Grief Guide is a grassroots program if the board is wanting to take them on, until they can get some other funding mechanisms and fundraisings and so forth in place. We've done that with a few other agencies. So that will be the expectation is, you know, other diverse funding streams to support
Greg?
Policy reminder, if an agency is funded with a program, but we deny funding for another program, and they want to come in mid-year, do they only have the ability to request funding for the approved program?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, not a new program mid-year.
Or not one that was zeroed out?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next, Home of the Sparrow. They were with us in fiscal year twenty-three, but took a little hiatus in fiscal year twenty-four, and they are back in the application process. For the Home of the Sparrow Quality Improvement and Clinical Data, the fiscal year request came in at fifty thousand dollars, and due to competitive application process and budget restraints, we are not recommending funding at this time due to, that this is strictly an administrative position, so there's no services being provided.
Ruth?
Is there a way to find out what their funding allocation was in FY twenty-three?
I'm sorry?
Can we find out what their funding allocation was for Home of the Sparrow and FY twenty-three for these programs?
Yeah, it should be on your...
Because we had, we didn't, like, we didn't have one for twenty-four, but I'm wondering the year before, we did fund them, and I don't know what we funded them at then.
Okay.
So I can't compare it.
Okay. I think that's easy. We can probably pull that up. We've got a, we've got a finger in the sidelines, so to, to give her a minute, and we can give you that answer. But yes, we did fund them in fiscal year twenty-three, but this program, this was different, I believe, in fiscal year twenty-three. I think it was a clinical person in fiscal year twenty-three, or was it an administrative position in fiscal year twenty-three?
So in twenty-three, they had a quality improvement coordinator, and the original fund was, amount funded was seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars. Of that, they spent sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight. And then for the fee-for-service, they were awarded three hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and spent three hundred and fifty-nine thousand one twenty-seven.
Thank you. Thank you, Melanie.
Mm-hmm. Carolyn?
So, I guess I don't know if...
So I guess I don't know if, moving forward, I appreciate the clarification on that new funding, but it, is there kind of a guideline by which, I know you kind of treat new funding a little bit differently when evaluating, but like, this isn't really new funding? So I guess I don't know if, like, moving forward, if maybe we can kind of make that differentiation between, you know, previously funded versus new funding? Because I kind of give it a little bit of a different look to, kind of...
Right, because it was previously funded in fiscal year '23, yeah.
Okay, thanks. That would just be, I don't know, if there's a way of doing it in the future, highlighting that, but that'd be great. Thanks.
Sure, that's a good point. And I don't believe I talked about the Home of the Sparrow Wraparound Case Management and Mental Health Therapy Services. That request came in at $400,000. And we are recommending, again, that is a fee-for-service. And we are, the request was really appropriate when we looked at the utilization, as you heard, because they did come back in fiscal year '23 asking us for more dollars. So it was appropriate in fiscal year '23 when they were funded last. However, we recommend a reduced amount of 250, only due to the budget constraints and for the provider to return in fiscal year '25 to request additional funding if needed.
Are we getting a presentation from them?
We, we weren't planning on it because they're not really new, but if, I mean, that we can talk about that?
I, I have a simple question. I want to know if this program existed without these dollars? And if so, how it was funded last year?
Okay.
Which could be an email. Doesn't need to be a presentation.
We will follow up on that. That is a very good question. Okay, these are all difficult decisions, as you can see here. Horizon's Behavioral Health, Child and Adolescent Psychiatry Therapy. Again, this program was marked as new only because this was child psychiatry in the past. So it was child psychiatry that we funded. They added therapy, which doesn't really fit with our access grants, because our access grants are for psychiatry only. But also, when you look at the volumes and the budget constraints, we do recommend partial funding of $50,000 to assist with the psychiatry access only for uninsured and Medicaid clients. And, you know, after further review, you know, we, as we talked about, you know, we don't fund the counseling services and the access grant since the focus is really primarily for psychiatry. The Horizon's Psychiatric Residency Program, that is something that has been successful that we've been funding for years. The request came in at $240,000. And again, they can't, as you saw, that they can't accept partial funding for this program. It is an important access grant in the community. So we are recommending full funding at $240,000. Next, Independence Health and Therapy, psychiatric access grant, basically. And we are, only due to budget restraints, this amount came in at $465,000. And again, any of these grants that we're saying are due to budget constraints, if we can find the dollars somewhere. But due to budget constraints and the reduced hours in the program, we recommend access grant funding at $350,000 to continue to fund the access to psychiatry. Their supportive and preventive services, that request came in at $50,000. And we do recommend $50,000 fee-for-service award based on past utilization. No questions. I will move forward with Live for Lolly. The McHenry County Harm Reduction and Recovery Program. I am going to defer to the opioid settlement fund grants when we get there. But we do recommend full funding under the opioid settlement funds. However, I want the board to note that the opioid settlement fund application request was lower. There were some issues with their budgets and their requests, I think possibly from going from one funding application, the annual funding and the opioid settlement funding. But also, there were differences in their budget. It was confusing for all of us to review. But we do recommend the full funding of the opioid settlement funds. Again, it gives them an increase. But this amount would be at 400, what they requested in the opioid settlement funds, of $498,973 is closer to their amount, which is what we're recommending for the opioid. But again, that's not in this application. Next, Mathers Recovery. So we have the Mathers Recovery Integrated Mental Health Wellness Recovery Initiative, They requested $350,000 in a grant. And unfortunately, the application was really difficult to assess since it basically, and I know I got some comments from some of you when you were looking through the application and found it, that the application was basically comprised of all the services that the practice has versus like a specific program. So due to budget constraints, and it seemed to be an inappropriate scope for the application for a private practice, which is also billable to SUPRA. So the activities are billable under SUPRA for all the services that they requested in this grant. We are not recommending funding of this program application the way it was written. Again, very hard decisions. Mathers Recovery, this is a new funding. And again, we're going to defer to the opioid settlement funds. But this is for satellite OTP dispensing program in McHenry County. So this would be dispensing actually in McHenry County. The recommendation is to partially fund the program through the opioid settlement funds and the recommendation of $129,600 mainly due to the budget constraints in that, in that budget. But we are recommending funding in the opioid settlement funds. Okay, moving on. McDermott Center, they're a new agency that's applying for funding. And this is for substance use disorder treatment for the uninsured McHenry County residents. They asked for $1,500, $158,521 for fee-for-service. But due to the competitive application process in McHenry County and the budget constraints, we are not recommending funding at this time. This program is basically to cover the costs of the McHenry County unfunded clients that are in the treatment facility, you know, the gateway which is outside of our county. So again, if, if we had the budget, it could be something we may want to look to. But this also opens doors for other out-of-county providers to ask for funding for mental, for McHenry County residents. So at this point, we're, again, mainly due to the budget constraints and all the aforementioned issues, we are not recommending funding at this time. No questions. We are moving to the McHenry County Sheriff's Office, the Police Social Work Program. Fiscal year amount requested is $337,265. And we are recommending the full funding at $337,200 if available to support the Police Social Work Program.
You're going to hold out $65?
That was our fiscal operations manager's, yes, desire was to, all these little cents, and we tried to round things up. So yes, that was a recommendation of our fiscal operation manager that, yes, the $65 we're holding out.
All right.
And again, they did have letters of support that are listed in AC1 in your packet. And there was an additional one that came in today for the Police Social Work Program. But again, we are recommending full funding of that program. Okay, no questions. I'm moving on to NAMI of McHenry County. Their Community Education Program. Their fiscal year amount requested was $220,000 grant. And again, due to budget constraints only, we're recommending partial funding at $200,000 for the programs, again, that are highly aligned with the Mental Health Board priorities. Their Recovery Support and Local System Advocacy, that amount requested came in at $280,000 grant. And we are, only due to budget constraints, recommending partial funding of $240. Again, both of these are an increase with special conditions to look into Medicaid certification to support and for sustainability. Because Medicaid certification now can be had for peer recovery. So if their site was listed as a Medicaid site, they could be billing for their peer recovery services. But both of these are increases to where, where they were. And again, only due to budget constraints are we recommending the partial funding. Next is New Directions, Addictions Recovery Services, who recently, I wanted to remind the board, wrote a letter for the need for full funding and more due to state grants that were not awarded this past year. And also, their executive director did make a public, public comment at the Finance Committee meeting. The first program is A Way Out and Connect to Recovery. The fiscal year amount requested was $270,847. And we are requesting or recommending $270,800. So basically, the full funding of Mental Health Board. And, and if you look at the past funding, just to note, from fiscal year '24, that was split in half. We funded the Way Out program in both the annual budget and the opioid settlement funds to, to make up for the programming. And that was a little difficult from a reporting end, I think, both for New Directions and also for the Mental Health Board to receive the data in two disparate ways for the same program. So, you know, we're recommending the full funding under the annual budget of, of $270,800. Next is a new funding request for Housing for Sustained Recovery. So it's basically, as you saw in the funding application, putting in apartments on the same property as the retreat. That amount is being asked, that capital request amount is being asked of $361,800. And we are recommending the capital grant funding, full request of $361,800. I do want to point out to the board that, you know, there are lots of options when we talk about capital requests. You know, we could have these dollars this fiscal year. We do have it in our budget that we may not be using. So if the board would want to consider using it in this fiscal year, if there was a request that came before the board for that, you know, we, we could look at that as well. But I know that we're going to be addressing some, some other, you know, meetings and with, with New Directions, so we can update the board even next month. But that is something to also consider. And that would also open up $361,800 for this next fiscal year. New Directions, Addictions Recovery Services, their Prevention Social Isolation for SUD Recovery. That request has come in at $77,429 purchase of position. And we are recommending that purchase of position be funded in full for $77,400. Their Sober Living Program. That request came in at $482,333. And we are recommending an increase from where they had, but a partial funding of $376,450 with the encouragement, again, this was before we knew that he lost some grant dollars, but with the encouragement for them to look at more SUPRA funding and billing to assist with their operations and their recovery home sustainability. So not just grants, but also the actual billing. But again, that, you know, you've heard from Bobby recently, and there is a letter from, from that executive director. Any questions? I know that we will be having further follow-up on, on, on this next month. Okay, next is Northwestern Medicine, or as you see, still listed legally, Northern Illinois Medical Center, DBA, Centegra Hospital, Woodstock. Psychiatric Emergency Services Operations and Aftercare. The request came in at $275,000 for purchase of position. And we are recommending full funding at $275,000 for those purchase of positions. Their Substance Abuse Nurse Education came in at, again, the same level, as it was last fiscal year, at $63,000. And we are recommending support of this, half of this position as requested at $63,000. Okay, moving along. Northern Illinois Recovery, the McHenry County SUD Student Assistance Program. The fiscal year requested amount was $242,360. And we recommend partial purchase position funding at $140,800 with the special considerations that volumes need to increase with projected targets quarterly. Again, it was a large investment. We had, it was new program for them last year, but it was a large investment with low volumes that we've seen this past year. Northern Illinois Recovery, SUD Detox and Treatment Services. That award request came in at $200,000. And again, mainly due to budget constraints and that this is a fee-for-service program, we do recommend partial fee-for-service funding at $150,000 and for the provider to request additional funds mid-year if needed. And as you can recall, there's also dollars that, in-kind dollars that are matched by the provider for the dollars that we support. Okay, next. Northern Illinois Special Recreation Day Treatment Program. The request came in at $15,500. And we recommend full funding at $15,500 based on past utilization of this summer program to enable more clients to be served. But as you saw, and I want to remind the board, that this is the letter that the executive director sent in. The next program, the LEAP program, he's withdrawing. He's found some other funding for that program. And he's asking, due to the increases in the day treatment program, that we look at moving those dollars to day treatment. So that's the request. I'll remind the board next month as well. But that is the request, is then for day treatment to be funded at $18,500 at this time. And again, it's a fee-for-service program, so he can come in mid-year and request more dollars. But that is, the day treatment is a summer program. So he would have the ability, if he sees more clients possibly that could be served, to come in before the summer to, to request that. And as I mentioned, the LEAP program is being withdrawn. Next is their Respite Services. The request came in at $33,000. And we do recommend full funding of this fee-for-service at $33,000 based on the past utilization history. Okay, without any questions, I'm going to move on to Northwest Casa. So Northwest Center against Sexual Assault. The Care Center, which is a McHenry County Sexual Assault Intervention Program. The request came in at... The request came in at 172,349 and we do recommend for this purchase of positions, the 172,300. So basically, the full funding of this purchase of positions. Next is Options and Advocacy. First is their Autism Resource Center. Their amount came in at 619,000. And we are requesting or recommending an increase to the purchase of position from last fiscal year, but at 500,500. So 500,500 to support the Autism Resource Center. Options and Advocacy for bilingual service coordination support. That request came in at 59,500. And we are encouraging an increase from last fiscal year and recommend purchase of funding position at 55,000 because there aren't any other revenue streams for these positions. But also, 50% of the activities are supported by ISBE-funded deliverables unless we hear otherwise. No, it's not anymore? It never was? Okay. So 50%, they're saying is not. So, but we had that in our documentation from the past. So at this point, we can relook at that, but we do recommend that is close to their full request. Pioneer Center, Human Services, Autism Day Program. The request came in at 85,000. And the recommendation is to recommend the full funding at 85,000 to increase staffing ratio, one to three, for the high-needs clients in the day program. Next is a new funding application for Behavioral Health, BCBA, which is Board Certified Behavioral Analyst Startup Services. And again, they're just recommending the startup support, which we have helped other agencies as well to start up. And they requested 40,000 for purchase of position and we are recommending the position request funding of 40,000 for the startup position in six months, which will be covered in the future by billable Medicaid waivers. So that would be something that would not be coming back to the Mental Health Board in the future. So it would just be startup. And just a reminder, those programs will be requested to come in to the special meetings because it is a new funding request. Same with the Behavioral Health Residential. That funding came in at 198,600 as a grant and we are recommending, due to housing, you know, not being in our full scope of services, that we recommend a purchase of position funding for those that are working in the house for 127,000 to support the services of the SMI population in those group homes. As you saw in the Foundent Application System, they had lost some of the COC funding for, that they had in this, for this program.
Yeah, I think that's what I was looking for clarification on, if they've gotten any new COC funding or if they're still running at that deficit and what's going to happen without that.
Yeah, they have not gotten any more COC funding for this program. But in our collaborations with Pioneer and Asking Questions, that was where the support level they needed for the purchase of position, which we can support them with at 127,000. Pioneer Centers, IDD, CFS, which is Client and Family Services, Purchase of Position. That request came in at 110,000, but due to budget constraints, we recommend the same funding as in fiscal year 24 at 81,850 for the high needs in the CSF program. Next is IDD Dental and Mental, or Mental, sorry. Dental, and that would have made a little more sense, but it's dental and medical. And that came in for 15,000 for a fee-for-service program. And, you know, dental and medical are outside of the Mental Health Board and the community of mental health, they have scope for funding, so we do not recommend funding dental and IDD Wellness Nurse, that came in at $65,000. And we recommend, that's the same funding they had last year, we do recommend full funding at 65,000 for this position that's not reimbursable and they do not receive any state-funded reimbursements for it at all either. The IDD Warrant of Need Day Program, that request came in at 500,000. And only due to budget constraints, since the request is appropriate, this is a fee-for-service request. Their projections are appropriate, but we are recommending 350,000 fee-for-service, which will definitely bring the provider to the level they need to be at mid-year where they can request additional services if needed. PADS Case Management, that came in at $180,000 fee-for-service program and we are recommending full funding at 180,000 since it does align with utilization history. PADS Overnight Crisis Support Specialist. That request came in at 42,000. And this position is needed. Again, these are tough decisions that we have to make as a board. However, we're not recommending funding at this time due to the budget constraints and also the low, if you can remember the pilot, the URS pilot that they had, which was overnight. So due to the budget constraints, the low pilot volumes to justify the position, because this position would not get us any closer to taking intakes overnight. So again, the position wouldn't get us any closer for them to take intakes overnight. If the intakes into the PADS shelter were to be taken overnight, then this position could be a consideration. But at this point, it doesn't move us any closer to overnight intakes at the PADS shelter. I do believe, though, that a position of crisis support, and I think many of the board members believe that too, is important. So if we are able to find any dollars, that can be also a consideration. Again, many difficult decisions upon us as we move forward. Rocking the Spectrum. I don't see them in the audience. They are a new agency that applied for funding and a very grassroots agency. They applied for 259,962.04. And at this time, we're not recommending funding, but for, you know, this agency, this is a new agencies I talked about, and the application did score lower than others in this competitive process. And with the budget constraints, it was just very difficult to think about bringing this agency in, basically consists of a mother and daughter team, which make up this agency and providing some respite work. It's a very small operation, has little structure behind it and support, and may be better suited for a joint venture or merger with another agency. So at this time, we are not recommending funding for either the IDD Autism Connection nor the Rocking the Day Program. Any questions? Moving on to Rosecrans. Okay, Rosecrans. Fiscal year 25, requested amount for their interpreting services is at 8,000, sorry, 8,100. And we are recommending fee-for-service funding continue at 8,000 based on historical utilization. The MAT program from Rosecrans, they requested 160,000. And we are, due to low utilization and capacity and budget constraints, we are recommending a reduced access grant amount at 100,000 for this program. And again, when one looks at this MAT program and compared to others and how it's delivered, you know, is it a true MAT program or rather, you know, just an extension of the psychiatry access program? Because again, it's medication assistance. But we are recommending a reduced amount. Rosecrans Mental Health Fee-for-Service Program. Their requested amount was 28,000. And we are, again, this is a fee-for-service program, we are recommending fee-for-service funding at 15,000 based on the utilization history. Again, with the special conditions of the warrant of need and to illustrate that there's no other payer sources. Psychiatry Program, which is, again, an access grant, but due to budget constraints only, we are recommending partial access grant. They requested 330,000 and we're recommending 300,000 for this access grant for psychiatry. Again, a valuable program in the community. Rosecrans Recovery Home. This is a grant which helps support some of the positions and that request came in at 265,973. And we do recommend the grant funding at 265,900. Their Substance Use Fee-for-Service, the request came in at 40,000. And our recommendation based on historical utilization is to fund this fee-for-service program at 18,000. And again, if they need to come back at mid-year, they can. There was a new funding request for Veterans Peer Support at 100, and this was a purchase of position, at 156,000. Again, due to budget constraints and the application scoring lower than other competitive applications. And also, if you noted, there's no negotiation on the funding request. They had marked, I do not, you know, do not consider this request if it's not for the full amount. So at this point, we are not recommending funding of this purchase of position request. Moving on. No questions? We've got St. Mary's Services. St. Mary's is a new agency applying and they're applying for perinatal mental health. The amount was for 100,000. And our recommendation to bring perinatal mental health counseling services to McHenry County residents, we are recommending purchasing partial position at 31,500. Again, this will help bringing a new agency in, into the mix and helping them acclimate to our outcomes and assess the services that they are providing. This agency will be asked to come in in one of the October meetings because it is a new Moving on to Thresholds. Non-Medicaid Community Support Fee-for-Service. As you know, Threshold recently has come in for increased dollars. They requested 575,000 in their application, but only due to budget constraints, we are not able to fund this fee-for-service program at the appropriate level in the full request, but we do recommend a partial funding of 415,513. And again, for them to come back mid-year allocations if they need more dollars. Again, this is our community, our CCBHC, and they are expecting increases this next year. So we do think that that funding level was appropriate, but due to budget constraints, we are asking them to come back mid-year if they need to. And they can assess where they're at at that point. Okay, moving on. Transitional Living Services, or Veterans Path to Hope as we know them today. For the Recovery Support and Treatment, New Horizons, that's a fee-for-service program. They're putting in a request at 144,000 and we do recommend full funding at 144,000. Their Recovery Support and Treatment came in at 80,000 and we are recommending funding at 80,000 for that purchase of position. Next is Turning Point. CV Advocates. That request came in at 695,000. And again, due to budget constraints and the competitive applications, we do recommend flat funding of this program, it is fee-for-service, for 430,000. And again, for the agency to return mid-year for additional requests. CV Outreach, again, another fee-for-service program. That request came in at 50,000. And we, due to budget constraints and competitive applications, we recommend flat funding at 25,000 and having the agency return at mid-year if needed. The PAP Program, the Partner Abuse Treatment and Prevention Program. That program came in with a request at 125,000. And due to budget constraints and competitive applications, we recommend flat funding of this fee-for-service program at 80,000 and for them to return mid-year for additional funding if needed. Turning Point, Trauma-Based Services. That is another fee-for-service program that came in at 175,000 this year. And I feel like a broken record, but due to budget constraints and competitive application process, we are recommending flat funding at 85,000 for the program. If we can't support, the actual historical utilization that we projected is at 145,700. So if, again, when we go back to any of these, if we have extra dollars that we're saying due to budget constraints, their utilization was actually 145,700. Warp Corp. Phase 1 through 5 Community Recreation. That was more of a capital request for that and at this point, we aren't, that came in at 221,740. And we are not recommending any funding consideration for this proposal since it's outside of our scope for funding. And I know there's questions that have come in that will be, you know, continuing to send the board those answers to, but that's our, at this point, that is the draft recommendation. Warp Corp Street Outreach. That request came in at 308,870 for the purchase of position. And we do recommend purchase of position funding for the street outreach at 205,000. Youth Prevention Program. That request came in at 243,852. And we do recommend purchase of position funding at 183,000. Okay, Youth and Family Center of McHenry County. Their Bilingual Service Navigation. That came in at 140,000 grant request and we are recommending full grant funding at 140,000. The Family Service Program came in at 160,000 and we are recommending full funding at 160,000. So that completes our Mental Health Board funding. So that completes our Mental Health Board funding application review for the annual process. And it was, again, a very, very difficult, difficult process for all of us to go through. And we have more time, and we have more questions and more things that will be answered before the next board meeting. We'll have two special meetings, you will get more information, and then the final decisions in October. But very, very difficult for the hundred and three applications that came in. You know, we only had a budget of ten point eight, and we had to balance the sixteen million of requests that came in with that. So it just was very, very difficult for us. So moving on to the opioid. I think we talked about this already, and I just am gonna highlight the two, I'm just gonna highlight the two awards since the other applications are all similar. As you can recall, we asked providers to please submit applications in both the annual funding and the opioid funding if they, if they matched. So for those thirteen applications, we already reviewed them in the annual funding, we reviewed all of them. But I just wanna highlight what we're recommending for the opioid settlement funds. And this is where the budget, you know, issues showed up for us. In that, in the opioid settlement funding, Livherlali did put in for a request of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred. Now, I just want the board to know that is significantly lower than the request of over five hundred thousand that they had in the annual budget. So I, you know, we know that that was maybe a technical request, but there were also differences in the budgets. So those of you that went into Foundant and reviewed the applications online, you could see that, you know, there were just a lot of mismatches in this application. So we did the best we could. This is a greater award than they'd had in the previous year, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred that we're recommending in the opioid settlement funds. Also, to round out the total amount for the opioid settlement funds, Mathers Recovery, again, we are recommending that we do fund Mathers Recovery out of the opioid settlement funds as well. So those are the two that would be coming out of the opioid settlement funds and utilizing basically all of the six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that we have in that client services budget. And again, Mathers Recovery for that program will be coming to present because it is a new program in one of the October meetings. All right. Well, I think we are, Chairman, unless there's any further questions, I think we're on the next agenda point.
Actually, Carolyn.
I have, sorry, I have a question on, it's kind of a general question, is why I saved it to the end. For the ones that are, and you don't need to answer it now, but maybe just thinking here, the ones that have multiple programs, I know, like, a lot of those we partially funded. And I'm just curious, and seeing some of the agencies going through, like, some grants go into one program, and they get some and they don't get some, do you ever allow them or is there a way for us to maybe try to navigate through that, that portion of one program may get, you know, X amount of dollars, but then, like, let's say another program gets a grant, and so then, you know, that might classify for a different grant, so then they need that money to go into another one.
Excellent, excellent question. I think I know where you're going there, and I'll answer. We do make accommodations for providers if they're seeing that they, during the year, as part of our operations, if it's under thirty thousand dollar move, you know, if they request a move in their program from one program to another, we do allow that. We amend the contracts, they're sent out, our secretary signs them throughout the year so he sees those grant differences, you know, coming in. So we do amend the contracts, and we do allow for that, for any changes within programs in an agency.
Okay, good to know, because then that won't, I won't be such a stickler on looking within those for moving those dollars around. So that's great, good to know. And then, secondly, when, when the ones that are, and I don't know if we're gonna come back to which ones we want to come in, but the ones that are new funded that are coming back, are you just bringing back the new funded that are recommended for funding?
That's what we're recommending, but it's up to the board. That's what we're recommending. Again, we use the rubric, we use the scoring, we are giving the, you know, and you guys have reviewed all of it, so we're going by the best recommendations. So it doesn't make sense to bring in a program that we're not recommending, but if you wanna hear any program that is up to the board, but again, if they scored lower, when you look through Foundant, all the things that we have to review in the balanced budget, we are not recommending bringing program or agencies in that aren't being recommended. But it's up to this board.
Chris?
There was some mention of a possibility that we might look at having New Directions come in with a request concerning their campus out of this year's funding.
Yeah, that can be discussed at, in the October meeting, that if, we do have the dollars. If New Directions, you know, if this board wanted to direct New Directions to send in a request to the board for consideration for funding the capital.
So that would potentially free up, like, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Free up a lot of money.
Would we then get a revised set of recommendations from the staff? Because I could see that turning into a very long set of conversations about reallocating that quantity of funds over this wide range of programs that are all, many of which are not getting funded at the request level that they made. So what would our process be like if this were to be a possibility?
Yeah, we can come back and make the recommendations, or in October, you know, we usually pull out those, some of those programs. But yeah, we could easily make those recommendations if that was the board's decision to look at funding New Directions' capital request this year.
I wanted to make a note, there's three police social worker letters attached in support to our package, and Leo handed one additional one out, it should be in front of you. Also, I'd like to make a reminder that there are two special board meetings scheduled for October on the ninth and the sixteenth, starting at five o'clock. Do we have any member comments?
Well, we, we need to, Ray, I'm sorry, so sorry. So this is the point where we ask the board of, we know already that we're gonna bring in the new agencies and new programs on the, so for example, the Brakes Prevention Education Program, Grief Guide, Mathers OTP Dispensing Program, New Directions' capital request, Pioneers Startup Position and their Behavioral Health Residential Positions, Saint Mary's Prenatal Mental Health would be the ones for sure that would be coming. We're not recommending, but again, the board can choose, but we're not recommending Home of the Sparrows since we, they're not actually new, but we could have them if the board wants. We're also not recommending Horizon's Child and Adolescent Psychiatry because it wasn't new, they just added the clinical staff, which is, again, as I explained, outside of this, of the access psychiatry. So at this point, I know there were some other board members who wanted other programs, but again, the goal of this is regarding funding requests and all year round, you know, we hope that the board has gone out and learned more about the programs, and I know many of you have. So it's not about learning about the programs, it's truly about the funding request itself specific. So if their current programs, we're not recommending for the special meeting, but again, it's up to the board. So those were the ones, the new programs and new agencies that we're recommending funding. Now, we'd like to hear from board members, and we'll make a list, and we'd like to get some alignment. So if you can state, you know, the, who you're recommending and why you want them to come? Because we'd like to get kind of alignment from all the board members of, yeah, you know what, I agree. Let's have them in, because it gets to be, again, the providers have to prepare to present in front of the board. You know, we want it to be something that's constructive. So if you can please, when you mention who you want to bring in, if you can also mention why, and if we get an alignment from the other board members, we'll add them to the list.
Carolyn?
Thank you, and that was actually what I was gonna ask, so you took the words out of my mouth. But I do have two, and they kind of tie together. And I'm curious, because one is a new, you know, the pads overnight one, that you're not, that's new funding, but it's the crisis support. I'm, and I don't know if it's bringing them in, or this is a conversation for another time, but I'm curious as to why the program didn't work before, and you said this wouldn't really change that. And this question kind of ties into Warp Corp at the same time, because I still feel like there's that void that we were trying to solve last time with that program of that night population.
Right.
And so I was kind of hoping to hear an update from Warp Corp Two on what they've done, because I feel like last year, we really invested a significant amount, like, went over and above and beyond what they had asked for, because, so I'm curious what they've done, and then what, really get a better understanding of what they'll utilize even a greater increase for next year. And then, if we can fill that gap somewhere. So I don't know if it's bringing in that pads overnight crisis support and finding out where they failed before, and if that potential gap is there, so.
Yeah, and let me just help explain a little bit, from looking at the funding application regarding the pads overnight crisis support. Again, I think that is a valuable, and I think we all agree, think about being in a shelter and having it minimally staffed, you know, that having an additional person at the shelter and having that person being skilled in crisis intervention is important. So I, the position itself is important, but it really, it doesn't have anything to do with the pilot. So the pilot was to assess if there was a need for overnight services, such as the vouchers and all of those programs would, and it really had a low volume. And we're not, we were surprised at that. We were hoping that there would be higher volumes to support more positions, but also from what we see, this position isn't gonna give us direct access to an overnight intake, which I think all of us have been stating, is that there's no access to get into the pads shelter overnight. And this position wouldn't do that either. So that's, at this point, we weren't recommending funding. If the board, what I'm hearing, Carolyn, is that she would like the pads overnight.
I just don't know. What I'm looking for is when is the opportunity, or how best can we fill that, that void? I mean, the need is still there, and I think that pilot, from what I'd heard, that pilot program had a gap in hours of which they could do the intake, and kind of that was when the need might have occurred, but there was maybe a gap in when the availability was, or how it could occur. And so I think there were gaps in that program, but how do we fill that to make it successful?
And again, it's, these are really hard and really good questions, Carolyn. I mean, think about it. I mean, it's, when you think about a homeless shelter, homelessness is not, that's another thing that's not in the scope of the Community Mental Health Act. However, what we support pads shelter is for those who are severely mentally ill or mentally ill, and the case management services for those physicians. So, you know, so I hear what you're saying. It's not ours to solve fully. I mean, that is more of a COC piece with the housing component. What we are focused at with pads is those that are mentally ill, and the services and the case management and how we're handling those folks in the shelter. So that's what's hard when you think about the scope of our services, is ours is strictly related, and that's where crisis support would be something that would be appropriate to fund, but, and they could use another person. So if we did have extra dollars, again, this goes back and forth, you know, we could support that person. So Carolyn's suggesting having pads overnight crisis coming in.
Well, I just wanted more of an understanding of why their pilot program didn't work, so I didn't know if it was the same. And, and we kind of did venture into the area of homelessness by providing into Warp Corp, and I think that was, and, I mean, it's undeniable that the two correlate, I mean, you know.
There's some correlation. And again, if you can recall, the board's recommendation with Warp Corp was different than the staff's. So again, it is, some of the services are a stretch from the Community Mental Health Act, and we just have to be careful that it also relates back to the three populations, mental health, individual, you know, intellectual development of disabilities, and substance use. So again, we need to make sure that those services are tied together so that we stay within the scope of our funding.
So, in saying all of that too, so I guess my one agency outside of, you know, what the new funding ones that I would like to bring back is Warp Corp, because I would like to see kind of the results from this year, what's planned, and how it ties back to what you're talking about.
Okay, so the, so what I'm hearing, and thank you, Carolyn, for talking about who you want and why, are there objections to bringing in pads crisis and also Warp Corp? Okay. So we'll add that to the list. Chairman, I don't know if there's other people with their.
I had asked some additional questions about one of the applicants who's new, who's not funded, and did spend some time reading the rubric scores, which was for best communities. And I know that the outcome of that application is in alignment with what we want to do, and some conversations about that potentially being more of an independent contractor position. So this is kind of directed at you, Leo, I'm not sure if, if something like that would have to be approved during the normal budget cycle, if an alternative agreement could come, you know, be made, if then, that is something where we could have that applicant present on that. And so why I am interested in this particular program, and not necessarily concerned about, or I'm sorry, I am concerned about the comments that were made in Foundant, this is a new applicant, it is a kind of startup with one person, so there was some comments that this could be a better independent contract agreement. The idea behind this is in supporting the education of peer recovery support specialists, CADCs, and some of our hiring shortages, most of the national recommendations and studies are saying that we have to support kind of lower level, instead of making everybody be a therapist, we need more peer recovery, we need more CADC, and there are some barriers to supporting those people and their education and their commitment to get the requirements to sustain that. And it was my understanding that this applicant was trying to create a structure of education and support as a hub that then would support many of our already funded agencies by supplying them with staff that they need. So there's a lot I like about it, I get the concerns, so I don't, I just wanna ask the question, if it is something that could be an independent contract agreement, does it need to be presented at this time?
Because it's, it would be part of. Because it's, it would be part of client services funding, that yes, it would be.
So I would ask that if staff were to reach out to this person, and that that kind of agreement could be agreeable to both parties, and if it's not, it's fine, but otherwise, I would love to hear more about the program and what it could look like.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't, we could easily do that, Lindsay. It would have to be part of the funding application decisions, though, still. So even if it was an independent contract agreement, the board would need to approve those dollars in this cycle, and again, we could make it an independent contract agreement versus a funding application.
Once again, if the rubric scored low, mostly based on the fact that the business has not been in operation for a while, and there's no, there, you know, it's in alignment with our strategic vision, and we believe that this person could do that under that role, then I'd like it presented if everybody else was in agreement.
Okay, add best communities to the list. Chairman, I don't know if there's anyone else waiting?
Chris?
Hey, I just wanted to verify. I know we decided to not advance the Rosecrans Veterans Peer Support Program, because they were not gonna be flexible with regard to accepting a lower level of funding. And I guess my concern is, I don't think I see any other veterans services anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Do we?
Oh, yes.
TLS, okay.
Yeah, Veterans Path to Hope.
Okay.
And also they.
I was looking for them under Veterans Path.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Would this service duplicate that service or augment it?
They were talking about augmenting. They, I didn't have them connect with each other when, you know, for a lot of the new programs and new funding, we do ask them to meet with staff beforehand, and that was one of the things that we did ask, was for her to, you know, meet with Veterans Path to Hope on that. So it would augment.
Yeah, I was just wanting to make sure that we had a sufficient spectrum of services to address that segment of the population, and also, this kind of goes to what Lindsay is talking about in terms of peer support being a good target area for us, given workforce shortages and the need to create a sort of like paraprofessional workforce, so. I thought about the idea of just having them speak to us about that idea, but if others people, other people think we have adequately addressed the service needs of that sector, I'm okay with not doing that.
I never think that, but it's something we can do.
I actually would like to have them come in and report to see how they could augment.
Ray, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I would like to have them come in. I'd like to see how they could augment and, to the work that's being done by TLS.
Okay. So we'll add Rosecrans Veteran Support Position. Chairman, is there anyone else in the queue?
No.
Wow, okay. Well, that'll make it easy, then. So at this point, the agencies that we have are all the new agencies we'll have. Again, we'll be in contact with all these agencies and these programs, but what I have, and the staff can let me know if I missed anyone, is the break prevention education program, grief guide, Mathers Satellite OTP, New Directions Housing for Sustained Recovery, Pioneer, three programs now, which will be the Behavioral Health BCBA and the Behavioral Health Residential Positions and the pads crisis overnight position. We have St. Mary's Perinatal Mental Health. We have Warp Corp., the homeless outreach program, and we have best communities and veterans, the veteran support position from Rosecrans. Did I miss anything else? Okay. I think we are done with this, Chairman.
All right, if there are any member comments? Lindsay?
I want to end where we began with talking about the Community Connections Summit. I did go. I know I saw Greg, I think I saw Chris in the audience somewhere, but I wanna speak to, I've been at this conference for many years, done many keynotes and breakouts and seen that, and was delighted to see, because I attended one breakout with Lisa Oris, who I know is here this evening. She is the person that is doing grief guide, which is one of our new programs for consideration, and it was by far the best breakout session I've been to in years of any conference that, she's not here now, so if you know her, send my praises. It was by far one of the best breakouts that I have been to in a long time. She had a packed room of people and had an amazing ability to talk about such a difficult topic, and I'm absolutely thrilled and excited that we might be, you know, funding and making for more potential for her to reach further, because she was an amazing public speaker, so I can only imagine what she does in the grief space for people who are struggling, so.
Mine?
I was just gonna say, you rock. So I gotta choose my words carefully. I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, you know, I'm looking at the clock, and I know. You know, I've put in ridiculous hours under the name of a job or being on a board, but for a lot more money usually. So nevertheless, thank you so much for what I consider, I've been around for many, many of these, and the specifics, the accuracy, I think you did a great job of fishing out where there were problems, not finding problems where there aren't. And if this was my work, I'd be very proud of it. So thank you.
Well, then, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.